Okay, good morning, everyone. I'll call this meeting Tuesday, June 13th of the County Commission to Order. The second item on the agenda is a pledge of allegiance followed by a prayer by Pastor Bryce and Weens and praise Bible to Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States, one nation, under God, in the visible, deliberate, meaningful, just as for all.
Freezen will lead us in prayer here. Where we pray to you and just thank you for this opportunity to recognize that you are sovereign over us. And I want to thank you for placing these men and women here and thank you for their desire to lead our county in a way that is orderly and fitting for our lives. Just would ask that you give them wisdom as they seek to operate our county in a way that is functional and good. Please give them the wisdom to see the things that need to be done, to know what is, what should not be done. And I just want to thank you for them. In your name we pray, amen. Okay, again, welcome, everyone, to our meeting today. We have a special item, three, your recognition of John Everly's retirement from the Department of Aging in Alaska. Come forward here.
Thank you for serving.
So, John, thank you for your service. This is just a small token of our appreciation. And it says, "We wish to appreciate, express our sincere thanks and appreciation for your 11 years of dedicated service. Your service to citizens over the age of 60, their family members and caregivers has been commendable, and lives changed for the better because they walked into your office. We wish you good health, happiness, and continued success in your retirement." Thank you for your service. You want to, you need another picture?
John, on the behalf of the Department of Aging and Public Transportation, I just want to thank you for spending the last 11 years with us. And you have made a difference in so many people's lives, one office visit and one phone call at a time. Congratulations and we wish you all the best.
If we could, I think we're going to do a quick photo with the commission if you guys would come forward. Listen, Miss Sandra, I'll show.
This is glaring. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate your work.
Yes, thank you very much.
Congratulations.
You're going to take your jacket off now so it can fit in. I'm glad I made him wear it the whole meeting. With all that effort to bring it out of motion. Item four is public comment, not on the agenda. Is there anyone here for public comment this morning? Hearing none. Does the commission have any additions or revisions they'd like to pose this morning? I have one, just in talking to Randy. Maybe an item seven B, or if you want to put it in A, just related to continuing the conversation about our scheduling for budget meetings. And some more input for you. Would seven B be okay?
That's fine.
Just general budget discussion progress. Unless there's any objection, I'll put that seven B. Anything else? Randy or Patrick? Item six is the consent agenda. It's like there's five items on here. Questions? Or motion to approve?
To approve the consent agenda as presented by staff.
Commissioner Harris, move. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Bogner. A discussion?
I really think one of the things that's on this agenda took a lot of work and a lot of research and a lot of time by Public Works Department in reference to transferring segments of K-14, which will add 12-plus miles, about 11 miles, to county's responsibility now. And that we didn't receive funds for that, probably never enough, but worked it out to where we have some ability to do upgrading when it's necessary, correct?
No. Wasn't correct.
Director of Reno County Public Works, on the agreement, the $400,000 that we're receiving on this agreement, they're to overlay all of the road and repair the bridges and some of the culverts. And the $400,000 is what I negotiated. That's, I told them that we couldn't maintain our current standard without additional equipment. So that $400,000 was for a truck, plow, spreader, tractor, and 15-foot mower. I don't believe that's ever been done before, but it took me two years of negotiating this. So that's what that money's for. The KDOT doesn't determine how we spend that money, and of course, that's your final decision, but that's what I negotiated that money for.
Just for information for the public, that will mean that we take over repairs, maintenance, rebuilding, another bridge over the Arkansas River.
Yeah, it's another bridge on the Arkansas River. And yes, we will inherit all that approximately around 11 miles. It would have been about 12, but there's a mile of the current road between Yaggy and Dean Road that they're going to tear up, KDOT is. So we won't inherit that. And that's, that's another burden on us. So since I've been here, we've, the state, we've inherited around 31 miles since I've been here of additional highway. Okay?
Any other questions? Don? I'm just curious if I had a question on the waste management plan, if Megan would pop through those doors.
I don't think she's standing by on this one.
She usually, but she's pretty good about that. I don't have questions. Anything else? Okay. Hearing none, there is a motion and it's properly seconded. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hirsch?
Yes.
Mr. Harps?
Yes.
Mr. Bogner?
Yes.
Mr. Weitzel?
Yes.
Mr. Freezen?
Yes, Mr. Bass 5-0. Okay, item seven. Don, you're back up for the annual report, Public Works.
Well, my annual report, I usually write something real short, and then I read what I sent you. So I sent you my whole report, and so I'm just kind of open for questions. Do you have any questions on it?
I can start, Don, since, you know, your, your budget is a substantial chunk of our taxes, levy taxes every year. You know, I think the commission will be looking at that as far as, you know, what, what we think we can afford. I don't, maybe you could explain a little bit of the situation last year, kind of just your general maintenance schedule. I know you have kind of a, is it a five-year rotation or a 10-year rotation that you have on roads?
No, right now, we have so many miles of road that the rotation to overlay them now would be every 15 years. And so you have to really maintain those roads, the crack ceiling and all that, in order for them to last that long. But that's every 15 years. So if we overlay 30 miles a year at what we're, the thickness we're putting it now, which this is the first time the roads have been overlaid with hot mix. So it's the first time we actually have a road and not just a base that falls apart every harvest. So we do it just like the state contractors doing, we're doing the same thing, hot mix overlay with the lay-down machine. So I had a budget in the past where it helped, I could hire some of the roads being contracted. And that money is gone now, and besides that, that cost, we can't afford it. But it helped us catch up to where after this year, we get to overlaying. We only have 63 miles left of the 500-plus miles in this county that haven't been hot mix overlaid. So within two years, we'll be done. Then, then when we start over, then we'll need to start over. And then we're laying it now about two and a quarter inches thick so we can have a good road. The next time will be about an inch and a half. So we're going to go a lot further with the same, with less asphalt. And so now, now we can maintain a 15-year overlay without hiring any of it done, which we can afford and we do it so much cheaper anyway. So that's the goal. And so, and then we'll have good roads. And like I said, we only have 63 miles left after this year. And that's, you know, 13 years ago, we didn't have any of this, hardly any of this hot mix overlaid. So that crews out there have done a whale of a job. And of course, after COVID hit last year, the price of asphalt and the price of fuel, you know, we, our budgets a year ahead of time is very difficult last year. And I shut down early from overlaying 30 years, and that changes that whole, this whole plan. And so this year, I have another 30 years, or 30 miles that I'm going to do if we have time. And I will get that done this year. Right now, the asphalt's a little bit cheaper than what they bid it, which is good. So we're getting a little bit less. I don't know if that'll stay there. But I think the asphalt's maybe, price of it's peaked and fuel's peaked. But that's why we need to keep on the schedule. And this year, I got 30 miles scheduled, and I am going to do that even if I have to pull out of some funds of my emergency road fund because we can't get behind on this. Same way for bridges. You know, we, in-house, we try to replace three, replace three every year. And then I contract a lot, and I save for that years ahead of time to try to get these bridges done. You know, we have over 1,100 bridges, you know, counting structures and stuff which are small bridges. So it's, Reno County has a lot of infrastructure. And when you get behind on it, then things start falling apart. We're, we're on top of it now. So that's why our budget is aggressive as it is. I don't know how we could get any more efficient. You know, we've, or we used to have two crews of everything and wasn't overlaying roads or building bridges. So we're really efficient. When we're down people, it hurts. But I, I didn't make much cuts in the budget here and there, but overall, didn't make them because you can't unless we do less. And then we're out of schedule.
What, do you know where the, the bridge, about a half-mile south of Bueller is on, on your list?
Yes. On, I think that's Victory Road Bridge?
No, I'm sorry. That's, Victory is the one I think is going to be constructed. The, the one on Bueller Road on the blacktop, half-mile south.
Oh, yes. You know, the one that they talked about, that would have to be enlarged if we raised the road to prevent the flooding.
Is it, is it on a plan or?
No, it's not. It's not there yet. It's still too good of a bridge, expected, I mean, it's inspected too high. It's just unfortunate that a larger bridge wasn't put in that location to prevent that flooding.
Well, as you know, about every five years or so, Bueller gets flooded in. Neither, neither primary road is sufficient. And sometimes, especially during, during school, can really create some dangerous traffic that has to go up north to forget what road that is. It's an unprotected entrance on K-61.
Yeah, that, when we did that study, the, where we needed to raise the road north of there to Bueller so that it wouldn't float over that road, at least you could get out of there going south. Then it was because of the size of the bridge, it was going to back up water and cause more flooding to the west. So in order to raise that road, you have to enlarge that bridge. And it's very, that would be a very expensive bridge. It'd be difficult to tear down a bridge prior to it being, needed to be tore down other than that reason.
So there's no expected date for any, it's not even on the plan at this point?
No, not on that bridge. The bridge is in good shape, it's just too small.
Other questions? Don?
Is this, I take it it's just access to the city, which could be critical that's being affected. The city itself isn't flooding?
No, the city isn't. It's just, you know, about every five years, both the west and the south entrance are flooded where the roads are closed, which creates a few problems. I mean, it's just logistical things with buses and so forth. But the response time to emergency services is, is probably doubled. Because I basically go almost close to end to come in from the north. So it's been an issue for decades for Bueller.
But we have a situation about the same at Haven. South of Haven, once in a while, it gets over the road. Big storms, it happens, so.
You know, we kind of got that same thing if you look at Mulholland Road north of the landfill. And if the trees were cleaned out, Salt Creek, let it flow down there instead of backing up. And that's another situation with, with flooding and the amount of brush and trees and shrubs that are grown up in the riverbed and along the riverbed.
I have noticed, though, that Reno County has done some work in the river at various places. I don't believe it's an issue east further. They'd rather have it back up a little bit so it doesn't flood our neighbors down the river. They'd rather Reno County take the hit. But I am glad to see that you've cleaned some of those channels and, and kept the damage in Reno County down for Reno County citizens. Appreciate that.
You know, and just in different, listening to different city and county meetings and things, you know, a lot of them don't plan ahead for their bridges from, I mean, we, we see that here locally. And so, Don, I appreciate that you are, you know, keeping up on this and have a schedule and have a plan to make sure that we don't fall behind and get in that situation where it's a surprise. And so, you know, that we're using the money for what it's supposed to be used for. So I want to say thank you for that, and I really appreciate the job you do.
Thanks.
Since we got a light agenda today, I'll ask you another question. The, we, we've visited with the proprietor of our canoe on the, the old pilings or whatever you call them. What road is that?
Out here north of Fourth?
Yeah. They're just abandoned, and he's indicated that they create a navigation hazard to the waterways. I know it's not the county's responsibility. We talked a couple of times about whether the county could, could remove those. Does that remind me where we ended up on that?
The discussion ended there. There was never any discussion after that. It's like you said, it's not our responsibility, but I bet those pilings are there from, from the old bridge that would, that KDOT took out and put in the other bridge. And I suppose when they took that out, that bay was probably below the sand level, and it's just washed out since then. To get in there, you'd have to build a dam around it to get the water away, and then go in there and jackhammer that out with excavators and stuff. You'd have to get permits to the Corps of Engineers and everything. We're not allowed to work in that without going through the Corps. Are we capable of doing that? Maybe if we didn't sink and stuff, I just, I just don't know. I mean, is, can it be done? Yes, yes, it can be done. Do we want to do that? I guess that's up to you gentlemen.
Don, there's a lot goes on in that river, and this river is, is considered an navigable river. So who acts, the Corps of Engineers actually is in charge, right? Or am I thinking wrong?
No, you're correct.
So they make the decisions on what's in that river, how it's used?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we want to go in there and do, even if we clean the channel or anything, we have to go through the Corps and they have to approve it of what we do in that river. I don't know, you know, they would, they probably would approve of removing that. It's more than just removing the concrete. Then if it fills in with water, you got to get in, down in there and remove the rebar and stuff, too. We've never done this as a county. But, but contractors do it all the time. I don't know how expensive that would be, probably pretty expensive. But yes, the Corps has full authority of what we do or don't do in that river.
So if, if, if the Corps has full authority, they should be the group that's spending the money to take care of that river, correct?
Take care of the river, but I, my opinion is they'd not spend any money to remove that in order for the canoes to not have to go around it. Well, I'm, I'm, I think if it was, if it's something that's jeopardizing the bridge or something, then we'd have, we would, of course, be able to do that, but that's not the case here. It is a burden to canoeers to have to go around that, you know, but I'm just, but they won't spend any money on it, no.
My, my big question is, is at several spots, there's things being done in the river that certain landowners that, and certain flood control dike associations feel might be hurting their dykes. And there's always some question as to who to go talk to, who's got the authority to crack down on these things. And not necessarily in this county, in all counties up and down this river because it is considered an habit.
That'd be the Corps.
People are asking, where do we go to make our complaints? So we'd be best off talking to the Corps of Engineers.
Yes. Thank you.
And I, would the, does the state ever, I mean, would the state ever come back and finish the job they started? Could we ask them to?
No, because when they left there, it was bought off and finished. So this is just something that's occurred decades later because of the shift of the river, the, you know, getting deeper, the sand disappearing from the top of those. They wouldn't come in and do that. It's my opinion.
Yeah, and is it possible to provide any sort of range of costs associated with removing those?
You mean to have, to get an estimate from a contractor, what it'd take to remove those?
Or what, what your cost, the county's cost would be?
I could, I could, yeah, come up with the cost of what that'd be. I could, I could, yeah, come up with the cost of what that'd be, but if there's a lot, I don't know that, I don't know what that, is that like out there? I don't wanna go out there and, and lose one of our excavators.
Yeah.
I lost one once in a creek, and I don't wanna do that again.
Now, there's some other pilings, too, on that river. There's Monroe Street Bridge, the old Monroe Street Bridge.
There, you can see, you can see pilings on about every bridge we have, even the wooden ones. You can see the old wooden pilings out there. They just take them down to the sand level or ground level at that time, and that's what they do. And Daniel, to ask your question, see, back when the state did this, that was state right away, and now it's not. The state has nothing to do with it now.
Well, you know, maybe we, I mean, maybe there's no appetite here to do anything about it, but the proprietor of, of our canoe has asked a couple times about it and indicated it's, it's dangerous to his canoeers, I think. Randy, did you go out there?
Yeah.
Randy and?
Yeah, we went.
I don't know, do you remember anything else that he said?
He was also talking about the entrance to get down to the river, and that was on county. He was using county road instead of the, I guess, entrance that the city of Hutchinson had built a little bit north of that. So he was kinda asking about whether he could have ac, they could have access from the county driveway on, into the river. I don't think that would work.
That's it, gave to the, to the east side of the river? Is that the access route?
That's, I think on the east side's where he was wanting, but they've been using the west side.
Right, right, under that.
I mean, if, is there any interest in looking at anything like that? Okay, I'll relay that back to him, but anything else for Don? Nope, okay.
Commissioner? I asked for that, he give maybe an update on the Yoder and Water, or Yoder and Habit Sewer Districts? Does we have new numbers now?
Yeah, to join the Yoder and Habit Sewer Districts, we just got a new estimate, which is twice of what it was when they started this in two thousand eighteen. It went from approximately three million to six million. A lot of the cost that doubled, of course, is because everything else has doubled since then, but the law enforcement center growing to the size it is and the additional size of the ponds that has to be, and of course, we had to buy additional acres. And a part of this doubling is, includes the, the land that we just purchased. So this is kinda what happens when things get postponed for five or six years this day and age. So now that, you know, the, the new estimated cost is six million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, one hundred dollars. And it was just under three million. Just a, uh, we purchased the land, it's already been recorded to registered deeds, it's all in design right now. I think that we're hoping that we will receive, because when I got this, I, I emailed back to the engineer that, you know, I don't even know if I can sleep after seeing this. But then some of the grant, the loan forgiveness and the grants that we'll get will take care of a lot of this, we're hoping. And he thinks that we have a real good shot at that, so it's something that we have to do, because at one time, Habit didn't need the ponds enlarged for Habit, but the Yoder is out of compliance and they needed bigger ponds. But now, it all needs to be bigger because of the law enforcement center. And of course, the law enforcement center, their sewer bill's gonna, will have to pay for some of this, because, and they know that.
That includes some infrastructure upgrades to the Habit area?
That's everything. Yeah, because in the Habit area, they need over a million dollars of infrastructure repair, not counting what it takes to join the two districts just within their area. Matter's fact, it's one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred just to repair their infrastructure.
That's, that's to bring it up to eight.
Yeah, I mean, some of the sewer lines in the Habit area, they need to be re, they're gonna go in there and reline them, because they're, they're nineteen forty some stuff, it's breaking, it's, it's, the whole infrastructure in Habit, of course, it's, it's old and it needs repair.
And I do understand correctly that a sewer district like that, if nobody else takes, it's my understanding that county takes it and we've inherited it and it's ours, wanted or not.
That's what happens in the sewer system. In a water district, it doesn't happen that way, but in a sewer district, yes.
Was my understanding.
Yeah, kind of related to this, so with the purchase of the property that's needed, we originally thought we would have the rest of this year to get the financing in place. The landowner, current landowner found the exchange property that he was wanting to purchase and so was wanting that money, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, relatively soon, I think, probably the next, I don't know, next couple weeks, months?
Well, they're lining up their transaction still, but yeah, it was one of those things where they were in a very, no hurry, and now they're kind of in a hurry relatively.
So the options for the county are to do a temp note, get a temp note and talk to our bond council, and once the financing is in place, the district will pay that back, it'll be part of the financing, they'll have a little bit of interest. That's probably the, one of the easiest ways to do it. We could do an internal loan, but to do that, we would have to have the money and financing in place by the end of the current year to be able to pay it back, to put it into county funds, so that's not probably realistic since we're going for grants. The other option that I guess the commission has is if you had any interest in changing the ARPA fund allocations, the only one you can really change is the Reno County Administration. Health Department Emergency Management Building Needs has five hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-five. Emergency Management and Health Department definitely need something done in their spaces. ARPA has a limited time to spend the money. We've probably come up with that equivalent amount over time, and then, you know, when we figure out what we're gonna do with Emergency Management and Health Department. But that would be one area, if you pulled three hundred and fifty thousand out of that ARPA, we could use those funds. That would be the least costly for the district. They wouldn't pay anything back, they would get the benefit of the ARPA. If we do a temp note, they're gonna pay interest for however long that temp note is in place. So I kinda wanted to get a little bit of direction. I know I'm kinda catching you cold on this one, but just some thoughts?
Well, in my opinion, that's where it ought to come from, the ARPA funds. Save the burden on the people out there, for one. It's a lot less hassle, isn't it, to do it that way than have to go through the other motions?
Yeah, we would have, yeah, because we'd be paying on council for a temp note, plus the district, we'd be paying interest.
Right, and we don't have a plan in place now for the completion of those other projects, really, necessarily.
Right, we're still working on a space study with.
I feel like there's some future things might affect that anyway, it's coming up, so be a good place to draw the money.
When do you need an answer? Sounds like soon.
Pretty soon, yeah, I mean, pretty soon.
As in yesterday.
We need to be able to produce the money when it's needed.
I, I think we wanna be, I think we wanna try and help this, the person we're doing business with, that we're buying this land from, we wanna try and accommodate them as quickly as we can, you know? They understand it's, it's a business deal, and we can make them wait a while, but I don't wanna make them wait too long. They're, they're a good community business.
It's locked up enough, there's no inherent risk of losing anything, is there?
No, that's not an issue.
Well, I think everybody's working, they are with the land, they just purchased, not with first, you know, to the first, what is it called, first title or something?
Security first, yeah.
Security first, and then, of course, when you deal with them, you have to give them the money, and they just spurt it out, so we're in the middle of that right now.
Okay.
Yeah, first time.
So it's the next commission meeting, I think that would be adequate?
Yep.
Since you kinda now have a chance to think about whether you wanna do a temp note or a ARPA funds?
That would put it on the agenda like it should normally.
When, when is, when will you have permanent financing?
Depends on the grants and the loans. I think we're applying for loans right now for this year, for the current year. The money, I don't know if it's available this year or not till the state's next, this year.
No, I think it's twenty twenty-four.
So, and then construction probably even start until twenty twenty-five, is that right?
It'll be, it should be completed by the end of twenty twenty-five, I think, starting sometime in twenty twenty-four.
Okay.
So let me understand here, if, if we remove the money over here, then when that gets paid back by the district out there over a period of years or however it all, it's not gonna happen overnight that they get these, we get these funds back. In the meantime, we're gonna be responsible for these other, we've gotta find the money for, for these projects we're taking away from somewhere else.
If you use the ARPA money, right now, we're still doing a study on the building needs, so nothing has been decided by the commission, and we don't have anything ready to bring to you. So if that money is taken out of the ARPA, the district will never repay that. That doesn't get replenished. That just means when the time comes for Emergency Management needing a building or renovations, we're gonna have to come up with a different solution. ARPA won't be there. So that's kinda the decision you make, is you wanna make that change of allocations. Yoder and Habit wouldn't have to repay it, we wouldn't get the money back, they don't pay interest. And then we're, when it's time to do Emergency Management and Health Department, that'll be up to the commission at that time to determine financing.
So you're suggesting reallocating permanently certain ARPA funds?
I'm recommending that if you guys don't wanna, but to lessen a little bit of the burden to Yoder and Habit. Two hundred and twenty users, I think, just over two hundred, so it's a very small part of the county. This is, that's six million dollars for that many people. Over a forty-year loan is still significant, so three hundred and fifty thousand does save us money.
Can he grant a napkin math on a six million dollar debt payment for two hundred and fifty people?
When we had three million dollars, but I don't have those in front of me.
Figure you double it.
What is?
I'd be relatively close.
We last any grants and any forgivable loans, too, so it might not be a close issue.
Like a forgivable loan, we might get thirty percent up to a million or whatever the max is, thirty percent forgivable from the state or through federal money, and then the grants, if we get that, I think we apply for two million dollars on this project.
Here we are, and I don't mean to jab, but had we done that to begin with, this whole project with those funds, which they were set up from the state to be able to use that way, it wouldn't be a bind.
Is it a twenty-year bond?
On the, for, to do, no, it'd be, if you do a twenty-year bond, it's gonna be a lot more expensive. To get the forgivable loan, we go through USDA, and it's forty years. We've paid off early. I would hate to have a payment for forty years, because other improvements are gonna have to be, be made in between there.
Just off the top of my head, and I, I got a, I have the idea that Randy suggested, which is Don's expecting, so you don't have more input, but I like that idea, because if, until we get a, a study back on, on how we can use that space and what we need for space, then at that point in time, we can look forward to, investigate what we need to do to do that space. Meanwhile, this project gets going.
Well, if you wanna wait till the next meeting, I can meet individually with commissioners. Do you have questions?
Got some time this morning. The issue I have with allocating money to particular, ARPA money to a particular subset of the population is county went through all of this and said it wasn't going to do that, and we rejected a number of requests, city of Beulah being one of them, where they had wastewater needs, and we said we weren't gonna participate. And now all of a sudden, we're gonna participate in something else. It's like either we open the can of worms up and we allow all entities in the county to request, you know, some of this ARPA money for utility purposes, or we stick with where we started. Like, I, I don't disagree with you, Commissioner Parks, but at the same time, I know the mayor of Beulah is gonna be calling me and saying, I fought really hard to get some ARPA money from the county, and you guys said no, and now all of a sudden, you're gonna give it to, to this water district? So, like, I think it's opening up a can of worms, which if the commission wants to open it up, let's open it up and relook at the other requests for utilities that were out in the county, because I fought really hard for it. It didn't, didn't get through the other two commissioners at the time, but I, I can't support just one request if we're not gonna be fair across the county for the others.
Nothing can be simple.
No. What was their request in Beulah?
They used like forty thousand dollars.
To do what?
Eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-seven, okay.
They had deteriorating sewer, sewer lines they needed help with.
But you don't have state breathing down your back out there either.
What?
Just don't have the state breathing down your back where we do here, though. We need to move forward.
I don't know.
It's not an emergency situation.
City of Beulah asked for fifty-seven thousand.
Fifty-seven, okay.
I think it's gonna be important really quickly to run some estimates. You know, I just did a back of the napkin, the loan calculator doesn't go above thirty years, but on a thirty-year, at seven percent interest, at two hundred and fifty users, it's a hundred and four dollars a month just for the payment. That's before, I mean, what's the fee right now?
Thirty-four, or thirty for sewer?
The monthly water fee.
Oh, this is sewer we're talking about.
Monthly sewer fees gonna be, could be close to a hundred and fifty dollars a month. Have people, do people want that?
We're gonna get grants and forgivable loans. If we didn't get grants and forgivable loans, those people couldn't afford it.
Well, I, I ran, I ran it on four million dollars. I think we'll get more grants than that.
You ran what?
I ran the loan calculator on four million.
I certainly hope we get more, that we don't owe four million when this is all over with, but I, I don't know.
It is a significant cost to the users down there, but unfortunately, there's not really a choice. We can make it as efficiently feasible as possible, otherwise, I don't know if we can get rid of a sewer district and they all have to get their own septic systems.
There's not room enough to do a septic system in that area, you know, all the houses are too close, right, Don?
Well, yeah, it have it, I mean, it's, it was set up like a small city, but it was, it was a base, a maybe base.
It really isn't a choice, it's just how we, how much, they can have, I'm trying to make it affordable as possible.
What if they don't, what if they, I mean, what if we create a situation where you don't have the rate pairs, because they, half of them can go and apply for a septic system? That's gonna like collapse the whole utility.
Yeah, you're, it's a good point. I mean, one of the big rate pairs is that, so the law enforcement center, and they're probably not going anywhere, but that's kinda reminds me of the discussion we had at the water, water district, if you, it's a balance, I mean, I don't know what happens is the answer. Everybody, you know, it's, when you lose users, the remaining users have more costs.
Everybody knows, when you lose users, the remaining users have more costs, so it's difficult. It's not a good solution there.
It just seems like it's a pretty fragile base. Like, if you erode that at all, it could implode it.
You would not set up a 200-user sewer district if you could help it, is the answer. But that's where we're at.
What percentage of usage will come from the law enforcement center?
Well, that's difficult because we have no way of measuring that right now because the way you properly measure that would be whether water use, and the water district's not ours. But, you know, I'm guessing probably right now, probably a third of it.
Is that how it's designed? Because it does, because I heard you say it was designed for maybe future needs at the law enforcement center.
This, this, this cost, yes, that's designed for what they told us that they're gonna double in size.
Would that be more than a third then, by the time they double it?
Probably yes. And so, and so, and so what I would wanna do to make it right, then I'd wanna get access to how much water they use and be, and they would, their sewer bill would be billed off of that.
Wouldn't, wouldn't it be prudent to see if we can contract? Or do we need to contract a wastewater rate? We can assess whatever we want. We locked in that rate pair, then we would have some sort of guarantee that we're gonna be able to make payments.
And that's what Don talked about, adjusting their rate. I mean, and adjusting all the rates and how we're charging them. That's the new.
Yeah, we've already raised it once, but we don't, but after we know exactly what all this is gonna cost, then there will be a study on what industrial, what law enforcement center, what the resident will have to pay in order to build a reserve, pay our help to maintain it, and pay off this loan. That is gonna be done. But until we get the, until we know what it's gonna cost us, it's, it's difficult to do, but that is gonna be done. And then everybody's gonna be charged appropriately to what it's gonna take to do everything that I just said.
But we'll, we'll have that at a time, like before we make any purchase decisions?
We'll, we'll, we'll be able to do that study as soon as we know what loans and forgivable grants we're gonna get so that we know it's going from $6 million that we hope to or something. I don't know. That's just, I'm just throwing it out there. And then we'll be able to know what to charge these people in order to pay for the operation, create a reserve, and pay off this loan that we're gonna have to give.
I would like to see, and I've talked with administrator about this before, is, is an emphasis put somewhere on the development of the inhabit area for some type of additional manufacturing, whatever type of business project there could be in. And I think, I think that's, I think the chamber should, my opinion, the chamber should be looking at that with our, with our partnership with them to, to get a, an actual idea of what's available. Because those projects, that area basically is shovel-ready, as they seem like that's what they want, is shovel-ready areas. And, and to me, I think we need to work with the chamber to, to do some type of analysis to see what land's available, what size is available. I've taken a map of this, and one time when I was up in Manhattan against Department of Ag, I showed them a picture of that, and they had no idea that this was even available down there. And so, I'm, I'm not sure we're publicizing that area adequately. That might help with this whole overall project as we look at it.
When, when it comes to Habit, Habit, Hutchison. Does Hutchison mean the city of Hutchison? We leased, oh gosh, it's been 40 years ago. We leased some property down there, building to put a business in. And we always dealt with a representative from the city of Hutch. I'll think of his name. But it's too late. It's been 40 years ago. But Hutchison took the lead. Is that Reno County space down there? I know we inherited the sewer off of it, from what I, but who's actually in charge of that space and neither isn't getting it developed like you would suggest, to get a bigger base so that not everybody has to pay. But in developing it, are we gonna need more space? You know, it's kind of like the dog chasing his tail, but, but I guess my question is, is who actually is in charge of developing that and has or hasn't? Because I know when it first, military gave it up from leasing property down there, that, that you dealt with the city of Hutch, not, not Reno County. And Hutchison, you know, the initials say it, Hutchison, not Reno County. Now, whether that's just because Hutch was the major city here and the county has some say or not, I don't know. We have some say in certain things, but.
The land is privately owned.
It's privately owned now.
As far as I can indicate in my research.
Okay, okay. So, it'd be private individuals, as was with our case. We bought this extra property needed.
But Greenwood's owns some more land down there too.
Question, you know, we've talked about the city of Hutchison's wastewater system is as close as you could probably get anywhere in the county. It's within, what, six miles or so? Talked about connecting there, given this is just a very small amount of users. I think there was concern that the cost would be greater. Now that the cost is doubled, is revisiting that worth, like, just running a line to the, working with the city on this worth a, a conversation again?
There never was much of a discussion about the sewer, the city. There's been a lot of discussion about the water for Yoder, which we haven't finalized yet. But the, that sewer, when, when I brought that up on a Zoom meeting once, it was just, it was canceled right there. So, there was no discussion. What would it cost to run all that sewer up here? I, I have no idea.
Well, I don't know, maybe I'm just the only one that thinks this way. But it's like, that sewer treatment plant is probably closer to Habit than some of the city of Hutchison residents that use it today. Why wouldn't we try to utilize existing infrastructure that's processing 20,000, you know, connections already? Then to build all new lagoons and spend $6 million for 250 connections?
What the city at the time said, the city leaders at the time said, is it's not a bad, it's, it's okay to hook up the water 'cause we can just shut them off, but you can't shut sewer off. We don't wanna go there. That's all they said then. So, since then, we dropped that and bought $350,000 of the land, the ponds line.
My, my thought would have been that 200 people need to, our hookups, not necessarily people need to be paying for this. The thing about connecting with the city, they may not want anything extra. We don't know their capacity. They, that's probably why they didn't entertain it at the time. I mean, I'm guessing, but, but, you know, if they take on a bunch of, bunch of extra stuff and, and, I don't know, get sewer that far, it's, I don't know what's doable. I'm not an engineer. I guess anything's doable. Cost. It's always cost.
$6 million. That, my question, that seems awful high even, just around, what, a mile and a half line from the Yoder area? 'Cause doesn't that, and I'm sorry to bring this up, I should have come, talked earlier with you, but you'd be, you would be pumping that from the collection point, present Yoder area, right? To, about a mile and a half to, to the Yoder site, to the Habit site?
Yes.
It just, it just, I'm sure there's a pride away.
So, you're putting that infrastructure and you build additional ponds because the three ponds there aren't near big enough. So, you'd have to build at least two additional ponds, then you put an entire sprinkler system in, then you rebuild all Habit too. And, and now it won't be a gravity feed system. It'll be, it'll have to be pumped there. So, there'll be multiple pumps, so. And, and you rebuild the whole pump system at Yoder 'cause it's not near big enough yet, not near big enough. And then, so, I, I don't know. Of course, you know, I certainly hope they better have some fluff in that because I don't wanna get estimates under what the engineered cost is. And of course, $350,000 of that is already gonna be, is purchased in that land too, so they plug that in, so. And like I say, over a million of it's the reason for Habit. So, now we're down to, you know, it's a, it's a $5 million project, not just to, to get the infrastructure to join the two.
And I realize how much PVC pipe has gone up in the last two years, probably four, five, six times.
And, and doing any of this stuff is gonna make it take longer, right?
So, do we wanna delay it or do we just wanna let them? Why, why would you not delay it if you got, if we got another $3 million to spend? I mean, even if it's grant money, you're still paying for it with your state taxes. I, I was not in favor of building a whole new lagoon system in the first place. I got convinced, kind of strong-armed by the rest of the commission on it. And it's okay, like, that's what you guys decided. That was a $3 million. Now it's $6. And it's like, I'm, it boggles my mind that we have the most sophisticated wastewater treatment center in the county right there on the south side of Hutchison, and we can't sit down with the city and say, like, "We have mutual taxpayers here. Why can't we work together on this and potentially save some money?" I can't, like, it also bothers me that the argument against this is, well, we don't know how much it costs. Like, why don't we figure that out? At, at $3 million, I got convinced it wasn't a good idea. At $6 million now, I don't agree with doubling the cost and not investigating, sharing already invested resources.
What do you mean by we need to figure out the cost?
To connect to the city's wastewater treatment facility.
I, I think part of the reasoning on that is because the amount of booster pumps you're gonna have to have in that, plus there was no interest.
But you're, you're just speculating.
No, I'm not, 'cause I got an idea about inner wall inserts before in, in city of South Edge.
So, how much is it?
You're lucky to finish here, minute. And I'll tell you that I really don't know how much it's gonna cost, just like anyone, today's prices. But you're looking at a power feed system, just the same thing as you're looking at going to the lagoon system. I believe I'm correct on that. And there'll be additional pumps to go that far versus what it is to go a mile and a half. And we maintain that regardless. That's, that's just some of the reasons now.
Does this whole package done include the water project too, taking water pumps? See, that was my concern there too. It is expensive. We're gonna have to do that later too. Gonna have to do something for water.
The, the water system, that's totally different.
Yeah.
That's only for Yoder.
Right.
We offered Habit, I think.
But then Yoder's gonna go up that amount for water and, again, yeah. Yeah, there's nobody left down there to pay for it. They'll all move.
Look, the wastewater treatment plant's here, Habit's here. It's, it's five miles to Habit.
And you had talked to the city, what's their, their appetite for even doing that, letting us pump it to them?
That was just one time with two city managers ago, and he killed it at the beginning of the meeting. So, it was not discussed anymore. And, and so, that was the end of that discussion at that time.
Well, I mean, we got problems in the county. I agree with that. And we got water problems. See, you got enough water to take to the new area. They wanna build manufacturing out there. And then we got water, it's gotta go to Yoder. And that's not gonna be the only place. It's gonna have water problems. Currently got a bunch of them around the county and, you know, they're scrambling to find that. I just, it, it concerns me because it'll be an escalating thing, the way things are going. This is not a one, one-shot deal. We're gonna continue to run into this probably. Whatever we do, Mr. Creason, on this, we, we need to do soon if we're gonna do it with the city again or ask them because, I mean, we've already purchased the land, but last year, the same thing came up, and I went to the city on the sewer stuff, and then we got so late in it with no decisions that we lost out on getting any grants at that time. And, you know, the project was probably a little bit cheaper then than it is now. So, we have timelines on, they're applying for these grants now. They're applying for this forgiven, forgiveness loan now.
And last year, we did have the forgivable loan of 30%, and we lost that because we were still waiting to make a decision. And I've kind of, I think we've brought it up to the city kind of informally, and they haven't shown much interest, but not to, you know, harbor on the water side, but we still don't even know the water rates. And that, we're on a consent order on this. I think we also have the state saying we need to get this done because it started in 2018.
Yes, I need to have meetings with the city now on this Yoder water.
Deadline's for grants is, I think, the end of June or July.
Where is the water, where's the water line supposedly gonna come from?
The water line to Yoder, if we connect it to the city, around the Siemens area.
So, does it come from Siemens down Yoder Road or some?
Yeah, that would be the plan. That hasn't been signed yet. That'd be the plan.
Within, within, that would be essentially the same route, the sewer?
Well, you, I don't know how close you can put a water sewer line. So, if you put them both there, I imagine one of them would have to be on private property. I don't know. I don't, I don't know that. I'm not, I don't know what else out there. I know that the plan would be to hook on around Siemens and go down Yoder Road with the water.
And if you apply for a $6 million project with the state, you get it and you say, "Oh, we changed our plans. We're gonna build it for $4.5 million this way." Do they care to change?
What you apply for is, is what you, you get money for. You can't change, you can't change it after you've been awarded. If I apply for a grant to replace a bridge, I can't change that bridge. I can't change that plan.
Same project, it's just a different, it's like different type of bridge, right?
Then it'd have, they'd have to redesign, and they'd have to look to see if they agreed with that project to fund it.
Is that worth looking at? I mean, to get the best of both worlds, where if we apply for what we know today and ask the state, hey, if we have something better?
I'm willing to do anything as long as I understand what it is, and the county and city can get together and make a decision.
What I'm saying is, we can get off dead center if we go with what we know today, which is gonna be likely the most, well, assuming it's, it's, what we know today, it's a $6 million project. If we apply for that, reach back out to the city and say, "Hey, is this a possibility?" If midstream, we're able to change it, then go back to the state and say, "Hey, we got some cost savings here with a different route."
We could deny the grants.
No, nobody wants to do that. We just, we just want to see if the state has some flexibility on if the plans change.
I can't answer that. That would take.
Did you ask?
I could bring, yeah. I can have a meeting and bring that, the engineer that we have designing this and can answer all these questions. Maybe we need to have a meeting with him.
I'm just asking if you could ask. I'm just asking if you could ask the state if the design changes, if that's permitted under the grant terms.
Okay.
What do we need to do, if we could make a decision?
I think we can wait until next meeting unless you're absolutely sure.
On the spending of the money.
On the spending of the, not the whole project, just the land that we've contracted to spend, which, which again, when we, Randy and I, this was a decision about how to pay for what we have to make. Randy and I just thought it would probably be a September decision and not a June decision, but the times have got moved forward because we're trying to work with the business coming into us. I think, yes, unless you know what you want to do, next meeting, you'll have to decide internal temp note or ARPA.
Is it something, we can make a motion to spend the money today, or?
I think it's probably better, since it's not agenda, let's put it, I mean, let's wait till next meeting. And I'm still, I'm in contact with the title, closing company and everything, it's not like, we're not going to get it done this month, we're just getting it set up, so we have to.
The internal temporary note. That's, that's the county loaning them the funds.
That would be spending county money, private reserve money, that we have authority to spend, knowing that we're going to, I don't know if we have statutory authority to do this, but then to have the district which pays us back in the same calendar year, knowing that we can't take county general money for the overall county and give it to a district.
Well, there'd be no way the district could pay that back in a year.
Well, the financing would have to be in place, but then we have to know the project. We have to get the, have all that determined before we can pay the money back. So the internal loan probably is not feasible.
So that's it.
Unless we're going to, we know the project, we're going to bond it, and we don't apply for the grants.
Oh, you meant the overall project, okay, I thought we was back to the land.
That's, you have to pay for the land, but to get it paid back to the county, we'd have to know, we'd have to have financing for the whole project, or its own temp note.
And the water district itself can't take out a loan? So it's eventually going to be responsible?
There'll be, there'll be grants and stuff, and then there'll be a loan and they'll be paying on it, yes. For the water district, for Yoder. Whatever that project costs, and whatever's not forgivable, and whatever's not granted, then they're going to have to, whatever loan and length of time that is, they're going to have to pay for that.
Plus the operation of the water district, plus a reserve.
But I'm saying, instead of an internal loan, could it be with a bank or a lending institution?
We're jumping back from sewer to water, so I'm not sure where you're at on sewer. Buying this land, paying for this land you bought.
That's kind of what a temp note is.
A temp, what we call a temp note, it's jargon, to be honest, but it's a more formal document that allows, we're going to borrow money from county to sewer no matter what, and if you're asking where the dollars come from. But temp note is a, is a formal process that documents that the sewer district's borrowing money from the county and paying a certain rate of interest. And usually you use temp note financing when you're kind of organizing the project because you've got bills coming through, and then when you finally kind of get toward completion, you formalize it into the bond afterwards. So it's frankly, I mean, it's kind of.
If they're going to loan, they pay you.
Yeah, so we're documenting that we're buying, that it's an accounting thing, really, but it's the important part.
I'm keeping it legal so that you're not charging the whole county for a few.
Correct.
I do have one more question.
Don, I have a decision on this today.
No, no, but with all this discussion, I'm glad we're having a conversation about it.
I did have one more question, not to keep throwing stuff out to you, but of the water line, sewer line, I know later on the water line, either direction, we'd go with the sewer line if we went to City of Hutch, or went the other way, whatever's decision's made, but if we're going to purchase the ground, it's kind of clear cut. Is that sewer going to have the capacity for expansion, other than the law enforcement center in the future? You're throwing, you like to see stuff built down there, I get that, but will it have the capacity to handle that?
I'll have to see what that's exactly engineered in for.
And will it have the capacity, if we run a water line down there, to handle more infrastructure as well? But we don't want to run into a situation we got south of South Hutch, which is ridiculous. And I was crying for them to find out if they needed water before they even bought that. I wasn't in office, but I built projects, and you got to have infrastructure before you can do anything. It should have never been purchased. That's just my feelings, and so, but I don't want to make the same mistake. I mean, I sat in on the same city meeting, I know we were all there, that they don't have the water for both projects, and they're hunting for it right now. And we don't want to run into that and lock it up where we don't have any expansion, so that's why I wondered if there was going to be room for expansion down there if we did something for the sewer. Yeah, either or, sewer and water later on.
Well, the water line that I'm running to Yoder will be large enough for expansion. It's just whether the city's willing to sell us water for expansion, that's the big question.
It is. Well, I mean, I say right up in the paper here a while back, where we want to project we're going to increase the population in Reno County by ten to twenty thousand people or something like that, after all these projects and industry. We've got enough water to give to an industrial park, ain't no way we could even do that. Somebody going to be without water.
To try to get ahead of this on the Yoder water, what my plan is, is to negotiate to buy enough water from Hutchison if we can afford it, to one hundred percent supply, Hutchison supplied their water. But I, so let's say that's eleven million gallons a year, but I plan on fifty-fifty blending it, so we're not going to use all that, which, but we still can buy all that, so there is room for growth.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to put this on next meeting's agenda. What, what are we going to be deciding?
How you want to pay for the land. We have a contract to buy land to enlarge these lagoons for the habit district, and you're going to tell us if it's, unless you've already decided you're not, and you're going to decide if it's going to be ARPA or a temp note.
What's the contract say?
The contract says by the end of the year, we have to do a closing, and the person we're buying it from, the corporation we're buying it from now has found the land they want to buy at a ten thirty-one exchange, so they're asking to line it up sooner so that they can sell to us and immediately turn around and buy the new thing. So that's why the schedule got moved up.
And there's a limit, I know on those ten thirty-ones, there's a time limit there. They, if they're going to make their exchange work, they need to have these funds to do their exchange.
Okay, I appreciate that you guys are trying to accommodate the seller, but like, we just spent thirty minutes racking our brains about all of the costs associated with accelerating this for the county taxpayers, like, there's a contract, they agreed to it by the end of the year. Why, like, there's no additional benefit to the taxpayers to accelerate this. We're doing it solely for the benefit, additional benefit of the seller for no additional consideration, other than we're just trying to be good guys, which is, appreciate that, but.
At some point, we have to make the payment, I mean, we're kind of stuck in that contract. It's just bringing it up to you now.
But why would we just do it like we planned?
It gives a, it gives a date when it has to be completed. It didn't say it couldn't be completed before, and that's probably this, the stickler here, they assumed that they would be able to use a ten ninety-one exchange, and there are time limits on that. Could you check? They might have to tie up their own money like Daniel's saying. But it's six months, some, for some reason, sticks in my head on the time limit on that, am I correct in that?
That sounds right to me, too.
Yeah, by the end of the year, we're into June here. They've still got their six-month window to make their exchange, if we, as Daniel suggests. But they might be damn hard to do business with in the future.
Yeah, that's accurate, I think, I mean, honestly, I. Yeah, I didn't think, I figured, in my mind, going into this meeting, I thought we were just, it's something we've already accounted for and encumbered, so I just thought we were.
Well, that's my feelings, that's what I've been trying to say, that, I just throw that out. That, I mean, it doesn't make any difference, we pay it this month, or we pay it in six months, it's the same, same accounting, so what difference does it matter?
So we have the same payment plan, whether it's now or at the end of the year?
Well, before, when we were working on the loan, we didn't know when we were going to get that money. We just knew, we know that the loan can repay this cost, so we didn't have a plan of exactly how to pay for it. We knew there was money and there are options, but we didn't have a set plan, we were going to do a temp note or we would have, we figured we couldn't have financing in place by the end of the year, especially with doing grants. So the plan was to try to figure out how we, to talk to our bond council and what the best options are to get this repaid, to pay for it now, but have the district repay it. The ARPA issue came up just yesterday, like, well, that's another.
Sounds like we have two options, one's ARPA or the other's temp notes. We can put them both on the agenda, you can put your recommendation on it in the agenda packet, and then we can debate it in two weeks.
I would imagine the contract probably says by December, not a specific date.
It's an honor before, like, we all wanted to get it done this calendar year. At the time, I didn't think it was, at the time when I was negotiating it, the county didn't think it was important to us when it got happened, when it happened.
To me, that's a big difference when it says by.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't say what date, we're not, we never had a closing date, it was just, we know we're going to do it by the end of the year, whether it's convenient for both parties. They've asked to move, they've asked to try and nail it down, and we're working on that.
They asked for that date in order to give them time to find land, they found it soon.
Yeah, that's.
Maybe I'm a little more compassionate on the other side, as having stood where you are, I think you'd like direction and something to do, so you can quit fighting with the state and fighting with this person and that person over what to do.
I want direction with the sewer and the water both.
That's what I mean, as soon as we get you direction, the easier it is on you to have to quit fighting with this.
I think the water's pretty well been decided. It worked with the City of Hutch, that they said they would work with us.
Right, we need to have that meeting to get that price.
To me, that's, should be, as soon as such, we can figure it out. But that's been a long, long time coming, and it's been decided sooner than later, and so we can get started on that. And remember about, what, one point five, one point eight billion of that, of that sewer project is going for actual infrastructure. What was it? So, we need to get the land bought.
Okay, so.
Put that on the agenda.
Closed, I should say.
And then what do we do about the doubling of the cost? Do you have direction there?
Because we're applying for the grants and the loan, and we won't know till, I don't know, later this fall, of what we get. We'll know about the loan and the forgiveness probably in October, I think, when we were notified last year for grants. I'm not sure of the timeframe on that, but it may be similar. So by the end of the year, we should know how much we're actually going to have to finance. And then put it in a forty-year amortization, at whatever interest rate the federal government, or the USDA charges.
And then, Don, you'll ask about how much flexibility is in the grant program as far as changing things? So we don't need any additional direction on that at this point?
No, I guess the one thing, do you want Don and I to reach out to the city again, I mean, to see?
I wonder if, if this isn't time-sensitive, especially if there's some flexibility, we shouldn't just have that conversation along with the water conversations? That's going to be in July?
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
I mean, there need to be, when there need to be another study done, and then.
But Commissioner Friesen and I are probably meeting with the chamber and the city, hopefully on, I think, July twenty-first, I think it's the date, or twenty-fifth, July twenty-fifth is what we're looking at. Hopefully get the mayor, the chair, and the chamber and staff to discuss the water rates and the water issue. That's what he was referring to in July.
What's the chamber have to do with our water rates?
Well, water rates is part of the project, the industrial development project. It's kind of all, there's so many different things going, but we'll take care of the discussion in the same meeting.
Okay, because I didn't think they had any business with what we're doing with Yoder.
No.
That's our deal.
Other than what they, yeah, the chamber one doesn't have anything to do with that.
Well, this is, if I understand this right, help me out a little bit here, is we're going, we're going forward with the water project with the City of Eggenston, correct? And finding out in the meeting that you're going to have with them regarding rates, because they've already agreed to be able to supply us water. So that's rates is what they're discussing, and how we hook up and et cetera. The finer, finer points of the agreement. And then with, with regard to purchase the land, we'll figure out where that money comes from next meeting. And then to start forward with the grants and forgivable loans with the state on the, on the present, looking at now. And then with the question that it will require, Don and Randy will acquire with the state with regards to finding any flexibility, correct?
Sounds like a good summary to me.
Okay, just want to make sure, he's applying for everything anyway, regardless of flexibility.
Regardless, yes.
Okay. Where are we at public works? Does that conclude your report?
I believe so.
Thank you, Don.
Don, I realize that you are short of manpower. And I think that sometimes when we as property owners look at some of our property, and we have bindweed out there, and it's a mess, Thistlewood, sometimes because of the shortage of manpower and so forth, we need to look at doing some of that treatment ourselves. I hate to say that, but if we want to protect our property from invasion of bindweed, which there's a lot of it, and we need to sometimes come in and get the herbicide from you and spray it on ourselves to help this situation out.
It won't be long till it's all bought out, because we have farmers coming in buying lots and lots and lots, every one farmer at a time, we're limited. Of course, you know, every gallon of this stuff we sell, we lose twenty-five percent of what we paid for it. And so there's a limit to what we can buy, there's a limit to my budget. I keep enough chemicals back to spray what we have, which I'm not short on help on the weed department. I have two people and eleven hundred miles of road driveway to spray, so it's difficult. But, and so I keep enough chemical back for that, and then all the rest of it, when it's sold, then nobody else can buy anymore. But like I say, we lose that twenty-five percent on everything we buy.
State needs to look at that deal.
Yeah, they do.
Please remind our representatives about that. There's, there's a lot of state property within our, our county, both in parks and various other things that, that's a state obligation. They own that property, but they don't seem to take it very seriously. It's the state's responsibilities, township's responsibilities, the cities and the towns' responsibilities, spray their not just weeds.
Okay, Don, good work. Appreciate everything you do.
Your report became an interrogation.
That's okay.
It usually does, though, doesn't it?
I don't mind it at all.
Don's seasoned with that stuff.
At least we get an answer.
Item eight B is the budget conversation. Randy, I think a few things that you're looking for. One is, I think we're having a little bit of trouble juggling schedules for July. Initially, we talked about a two-day meeting. I encourage you to just. I encourage you to just narrow the field down to the big, bigger items that we need to discuss and maybe have a one-day meeting. Do you think that's possible?
I think it is, yeah. I'll probably at the next commission meeting, I'm gonna try to have kind of a very high-level overview of what the budget's kind of starting to look like. And then, I can also provide, anyone that wants to come talk, there's 140-page document that lists the whole budget. That's really in the weeds, but if you wanna look at it, I can kind of explain some things to you on an individual basis. But, yeah, we could do a, a one-day event sometime in June or July to really bring some, some of the big departments that have big increases into the, to talk to you and explain their cost. Because their costs aren't going down and basically the departments are pretty lean already, so have that discussion.
Did you get any clarity from, so you, you sent out two spreadsheets for us to kind of provide early input. One was outside agencies and the other was, was that capital? I mean, did, did that, did you get everybody's feedback?
I'm not sure if I got everyone's, I have to look. I know on the outside agencies, I think I talked with a couple commissioners and then a couple sent me the, their spreadsheet. I'll have to check, see if I've talked with or received something from all five on the outside agencies. I have somewhat of clear direction there. There's some of those agencies that differ between you guys, and so, on those, I'll probably leave as-is, as requested, and let you guys kind of discuss among the five of you in a meeting, which ones to cut or which ones to give an increase to. The capital, that, I don't think I forgot everyone's back, but I believe I have enough to make a good number of cuts there that I, that I think you guys would support. There may still be some things on there that you still wanna cut. So, that'll come up at a different time.
Why don't we, you could try as a commission to add that feedback to Randy in a week, like next Tuesday? And I'd like a chance to talk to him about just where we're at, and maybe we could, would it be appropriate to brief the commission in two weeks on kind of where we're at on those two items? Kind of, does that, clarity on that should start to give you a little bit of help on budget cuts, right?
Yeah, cause the largest thing, I mean, we have to, there's so many things to look at in the budget to determine that final budget that's recommended and then adopted. But the capital and those outside, outside agencies have actually a small part, but the capital is a big part. So, getting that feedback will definitely help. There are other things that I'll bring up in a couple weeks with the summary to kind of ask for a little more direction. Going back to the date to have a work session, part of the, I guess, the dilemma with your schedules as three commissioners are new to this process, I think it's important to have all five of you in the, in one setting. There's two weeks that one commissioner's not available, and then, right after that, there's another two weeks, another commissioner's not available. So, we have a month of time where even with meetings, there's only gonna be four commissioners here at, at a regular meeting. So, to have a special meeting, we either do one in July, early July, but know that Chairman Friesen won't be here. It'll be four people, and so, if there's a split, no tiebreaker on direction, just not knowing that that'll happen. That's part of the concern. If we wait until, we could actually move it up maybe in June to, our meeting's on the 27th, and I don't know, Commissioner White soul, 28th.
I'll be here.
That whole week.
No, no, no.
On the 27th, if we did it in the afternoon.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, why don't, why don't we just do it after an old meeting, I mean, is that?
That would be the, we either do it then, or the week of, I guess we'd have to move back to the week of July 17th. To do that, at the next meeting, we're gonna need the commission to authorize the intent to exceed the revenue-neutral rate. What that, because of the timeframe, what that does is says the county intends to go above the R and R, but doesn't commit you to do that. You still can go at the R and R or below, it gives us more time to make that decision. So, if you're, if I get direction to have whatever documents prepared for the next meeting in June, that we will exceed it, knowing that, that, that hasn't been decided. That frees up that time to maybe meet in July, if we don't meet on June 27th in the afternoon. If we just do an afternoon or after a commission meeting, it will limit the number of departments we can get in here, so I would probably.
There's gonna actually be a roundtable discussing some of the individual expenses, i.e. maybe outside agencies with the five of us?
I think that's on the slate for next meeting.
We've done this, exceeding our R and R before, and then we come in and, and we've dropped it. We dropped our L and R.
Well.
So, I think that that's something that, that the commissioners need to understand for sure, that even though, just to give us time to complete the budgetary process.
July 20th is the last day to notify the county clerk of intent, one way or the other.
There's some appraisals that aren't quite complete at that point, so it would be to our advantage to extend that, to give us time to get a full picture.
Me, I think we have evaluation numbers, but we're still entering that along with the hearing, cash balances from last year, as the audit's almost done now. So, there's some work we're doing behind the scenes that's taking time. But we have the, we do have the numbers from the county clerk and county treasurer, so we're good there.
What this would do is give us more time to, to study the thing and, and not make a knee-jerk deal just to get under the, under the timeline.
See, that's put on the agenda next, next time, next meeting is, is the R and R.
Personally, what, when we talked, I said July would work better for me. What week in July is available?
I need to get live with you.
Apparently, July is pretty well shut.
July 17th, week of July 17th would be, you could have a special meeting on July 19th, and then you could do the R and R at that point. That still gives us time, or.
Does that not leave anybody out?
Chairman Friesen won't be here, so we.
I got the 26th of the fifth. Are you out both of those?
Of July?
No, I'll be, I'll be on the first week of July. So, I, I can do something last week.
Let's, um, let's do this one at a time. So, is, would everybody be available to put in a full day on the 27th of June? That's tough for you, Don.
Yeah, but I guess I signed up for it, I'll be here.
Well, is it any better July 5th?
Probably, yeah. We could get now, it's hard enough, things will be slowing down a little bit. At least we won't be a little harder.
Commissioner White soul won't be here.
Okay, first week of July.
Well, then, let's, 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 let's go back and if it needs to be the 27th, let's do it.
I mean, another thing, another thing we could do is.
But that's not for today.
If you do the R and R, if you approve exceeding that, knowing that you, you'll still have to get a, a maximum budget to publish, that can always be changed, but that's what will go out in the R and R notices. But if you do that before the July 20th deadline, which would probably be at the next commission meeting, unless you have a special one, then a work session with departments could be later in July.
Okay, let's just, let's hold for a second on that, cause we keep going to R and R. Why don't you explain, make sure everybody understands what that means real quick? And then, we'll talk about whether anybody's uncomfortable doing it, it may give you some easy clarity, but.
Kind of the easy way to explain the revenue-neutral rate is they look at the increase in valuation and then determine what mill levy would be needed so that you get the exact same property tax revenue for the next year. So, and this number could change, as I'm explaining, we have some cash, cash balance numbers that may change. But right now, with our increase in valuation of 5.7%, the revenue-neutral rate would be 35.764 mills, which is a 5.41% decrease. That would take 4.3 million dollars in cuts from the current budget request.
But just to be clear.
But it's meant to keep our rev, property tax revenue the same each year. No increase with increase in valuation or growth of the community.
Or cost. But just to be clear here, really, the decision you're asking for is if we notify the public that it's possible that we won't be revenue-neutral, right? It's just notifying the public, and then you have the option to go above revenue-neutral if you so choose. But that is not what we would be deciding, that's not what you're asking.
Right, I'm not asking for that decision, just.
It's just.
The intent that it could happen.
And it's pretty common for almost all agencies to go ahead and invoke that. It lets the public know that it's possible that we're gonna go above revenue-neutral. They can be here for the process, but we're not, we're not saying it will happen.
Right.
So, is there anyone uncomfortable just, just giving that authorization?
I'm uncomfortable with that, because it also tells the public, hey, we might do it, you know? I mean, I think we send a clear, kind of clear message, we won't. Then they, when they're going to talk to the cities and school districts and stuff, they can say, well, hey, the county isn't doing this.
Well, yeah, I.
And I, and I think we can get it done before.
I think the, the challenge I have with your, your, your position, Commissioner White soul, is, is Randy can't tell us for sure, you know, what, what it is we can cut. And so, having optionality seems prudent to me, sounds like Commissioner Hurst agrees. Are you, Mr. Bogner shaking his head yet?
I, I think we, we need the option. I sincerely hope we can keep it the same or possibly even less, but with inflation and the final numbers and everything aren't there, we need an option, just simply because we don't have everything we need right now.
And just to be clear for you all, revenue-neutral is not the same thing as mill levy-neutral. Revenue-neutral means that there is not a dime more spent this year or next year, this was this year, or budgeted.
For revenue.
Yes, so there's no capacity for inflationary pressures or increased costs. So, you will, you will be cutting things and accommodating inflation. So, it's, 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 it will be challenging, it's possible. Christian Parks, where are you at?
I would like to see it stay revenue-neutral, but you're explaining to me that's not the actual final time we approve that.
Right, it'll be.
And it's open for discussion later than that. So, I mean, I, as long as that's on the table, I'm not particularly, I think the concern in the county is, or they're, obviously, everybody went through the roof with their appraisals, and they don't want their taxes being raised, and I think that's the underlying issue here we're looking at. I'm sure John's thinking that, I am too. I don't wanna see their taxes go up.
Well, I, I'd agree that, that people will, our phone's gonna ring. What are you doing raising taxes? Well, we haven't done that yet. We may be forced to in certain instances, but I sure as heck, we don't have.
But we're forced when we stretch this out by statute to offer that, you're saying, to cover us because we have deadlines.
The deadlines, so if you do have the intent to exceed by July 20th, you have to let that be known, but then you have to hold a public, the R and R hearing and the public hearing for the budget, August 20th through September 20th. If you do not exceed, you have to publish the notice of public hearing by August 4th, and that will be what sets the maximum budget, which is the R and R budget or lower. And then, by August 20, 15th to 25th is when you adopt the budget. So, you gain about a month by saying you'll exceed, even if you don't at the end.
And when do you, when do you need that decision, like the deadline?
By July 20th, but with Commissioner Friesen with you not being here, that meeting in July, June.
We essentially pre-authorize it, subject to provocation, and, you know, if, if we solve everything by July 20th, then it's revoked, if we don't, it gets dropped?
I think it'd be hard to do, because you, because of the notices you have to give out once you do it, that would be the, I mean, because, because you said, I don't know, when you have to, once you said it, then you say when your hearing is, then you start telling everybody what the hearing is, so it'd be hard to stuff that back into.
Yeah, cause we have to let the clerk know by July 20th, but at that same time, there has to be a budget number that is the, kind of the max that you see feasible, or at the very most, what you would give or, you know, have. So, because then that, Don will then put that along with all other taxing entities into an R and R notice and send it out.
Well, is it July 20th?
July 20th.
So, if you have a decision on R and R by July 20th, then you're okay?
Yes.
You can do the notices after that.
Yeah, we'll just have to have the number, the intent and the number, the maximum budget number.
Next, next, if next meeting we give you the authorization to do it, pending our discussions, given like everybody's not gonna be around, and, and then, we come up with our number, it either is or isn't. If it is, drop it on the 20th. Is there any reason we can't give you authorization?
So, maybe a motion to give the revenue neutral, but to give that notice on the 20th of July, so that you could rescind your motion if you had to? I guess you could do that.
At this moment, I think that's possible, but I reserve the right to tell you later it's not.
The one thing I like, the one thing I, I agree with Commissioner White soul on is the optics are poor. I think somebody over here said it too, it's like, you say we're gonna do it because it's the intent notice, and all we're doing is buying an insurance policy in case what we find, you know, is unexpected or not possible. So, maybe we get the best of both worlds by just giving you the okay on July 20th to authorize it, and if Commissioner revokes it, it revokes it, we don't spook the public early.
Yeah, and, and anybody in the public, I, I'm listening, cause I'm, I'm sure you guys realize this, but the difference between revenue-neutral and mill levy-neutral. Revenue-neutral is if we spend $100 this year, we'll spend $100 next year, or, you know, or less than that. Mill levy-neutral is if we, if, or if we collect $100 this year, the next year, we're gonna collect $105.7, or $105.70, because the mill levy would stay the same, but your taxes would go up 5% if the mill levy stays the same. So, so that, that's the difference, and.
Commissioner Friesen, I'll talk to the clerk and Randy, anyone else I need to, and so, that next meeting on the 27th will have the best possible, most flexible plan in place. Don.
Okay, and as far as the meeting schedules, if, one other option, if like 25th is challenging, we could, I don't know what's on the docket for the 25th, we could move to next week, the 18th, and then.
Are you, okay, you're looking in June?
I'm sorry, I'm in July.
July. Are you thinking June 27th?
Well, 27th will be our next meeting, right? So, we, it sounds like it'll be our, Mr. Bogner, we could meet the 20th, is that any better?
Probably worse.
Okay, all right, so we're going to plan on
It's going to rain that day, Randy.
Good, good or bad, I don't know. But let's plan on 27th, full day meeting, we'll provide lunch here, just keep working through lunch, if that's all right. And then we'll, we'll, some of the items on there will be the revenue neutral option, resolution, the, we're going to discuss outside agencies. Get some feedback on that, the capital budgets, both of those are going to be based on homework. Randy was nice enough not to single us out, but it sounds like some of us don't have our homework done, so if you can get with him and try to get that done by next Tuesday, so he has some time to kind of tabulate that for two Tuesdays from now, does that make sense to everybody? Commissioner Hurst, you good with that? Very good. And then real quickly, just to kind of give Randy a bit more of a gauge of the, just so he kind of knows how sharp his chainsaw needs to be. I hear Commissioner Weitzel, you're, you really want to go for revenue neutral. Is that kind of your goal?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Commissioner Hurst, do you have kind of some guidance on where you want to?
I would love to stay revenue neutral, but what I want to, what I want to bring out is with 8% inflation last year, with 5-plus percent inflation this year, I think if we go revenue neutral, we're going to have to decide as a commission what services that we provide, that we will either have to cut or cut clear out. I don't see, unfortunately, I don't see any other way. I, I just, I think it's important that we do understand, and the public needs to understand that if we go revenue neutral because of inflation, the types of inflation that we've just been through and are witnessing today in presentations, that we need to prepare to find out what services our public, or we want to give up.
I agree with that. You revenue neutral? I am, but I think there is some outside services and things that we can cut to make that happen and stay in that position. Commissioner Vogner?
Well, that, that, that is the thing, that's the killer on this is the inflation. And everybody in their own household should realize what they're spending. We're buying the same stuff they are in different volumes. We're, we're sitting here trying to get our budget in order just like they are. There are some things that are possible and there are some things that just aren't possible and provide the same amount of service. As Ron was saying, yes, it's, it's a worthy goal and we need to keep things as low as we can, but at this point, we don't have specific, we, we've had requests and through those requests, people have, even certain departments have made overtures that they could cut this or back this up or, and, and cut their own budgets. I mean, they're, they're, they're of the same mindset, they're taxpayers too, as was pointed out to me in, in my campaign that, by several people in the county that work for the county. We're also paying those same taxes. They don't like it any better than anybody else, but the services still got to either, you've got to make that decision. Is that a service we need or is it not? And that's the only way you're going to cut it. And, and you're going to cause somebody some pain anywhere you do it. But yes, I, in favor of holding the line as much as we can, but I'm a little afraid when we start looking at individual departments, individual numbers, there's some things that we just won't be able to do with the crazy inflation we've had. But like you say, I'm, I'm definitely in favor of keeping it as low as we can.
I'm going to back up if you don't mind.
You're backing up?
Sorry. In light of that comment, I appreciate that, Don, and I think everyone at Holmes made their cuts, but the other side of it is, I'm not a big fan of cutting the things that are necessary in the departments of the county. It has always been the outside agencies that have, and even though they're not a giant burden, but there's lots and lots of little ones that can make the difference. Our county-owned departments and projects have to be maintained and taken care of. In future years, I think we'll look to reduce some of those services. I don't want to give any public examples of what's in my mind, I don't think it's fair to do right now, but I think there's some of them that are not even really utilized anymore that have asked for money this year, that could be managed differently, they don't need near that money. As we spoke, and I know, I asked Patrick just a couple of meetings ago on statutory or on resolutions, is there a dollar amount required? No, there's not. I think you can greatly get reduced. If they want money, they can go find it somewhere else. It's never been the job of the county to fund nonprofit agencies that don't belong to the county. And I don't know whether you agree with that or not, I don't really care, but that's my feeling. So when it comes down to needing to do this infrastructure that we're required to do, that's where the money ought to go. It doesn't go to outside agencies. It's at home first, and if we have some extra, we feel like we need to do a charitable thing, I believe that's a great thing to do. But that's my position on it.
Well, it all rounded out here. Appreciate all the comments, I think this is helpful for Randy. The, and, and we'll, so please do get especially the outside agency feedback to him if you don't have it. I think we ought to, I'll, I'll work with Randy on it. We ought to probably start giving some heads up if there's going to be substantial cuts to nonprofits, because I don't know that they have, have been planning on it. And, and so, you know, if the commission goes that way, we should start letting them know. The, I do think that the, you know, the kind of what you're going to get for what you're going to do to nonprofits may, may be not as valuable. I mean, if, if we're trying to, let's just say we really, like, we tell Randy to cut it deep and say $400,000, that's not even a bill. The big agencies, one of them's Public Works, one of them's Law Enforcement, Jail, these are the ones that really drive our, our tax impact. And I think generally speaking, nobody wants to cut law enforcement or roads and bridges, but you really want to make an impact, a 10% cut in any one of those departments starts actually changing the, the tax impact, like, so it just, like, to me, kind of trying to balance what I'm hearing here, like, cutting too deep on nonprofits or, you know, I think there's probably going to be a clash here related to the perceived or true value of economic development investment. I think that's always a squishy one for, for us and whether you believe that that dollar of taxpayer money is going to get levered up by five to 10. I think we saw that this year with, with the grant making, what Mr. Chambers was doing. But economic development is usually where, you know, the sites are set related to cutting and it's just, it's, I think you should be prepared to have the conversation whether philosophically you agree with taxpayer money being used to assist in the development of the county or not. But also be prepared that while outside agencies may be a scapegoat here for, for what we're really trying to do is to reduce taxes, the impact of that is not going to be enough to get you milk, to get you revenue neutral. So just, just be prepared if you really want to, like, the, to me, one of the things I'd love, I think it's such a sensitive topic, but our jail and the amount of people we're, we're processing through district court and everything else is a huge tax burden to the county. You know, anytime somebody says, hey, maybe we should look at how we're like prosecuting people or jailing people, you know, the district attorney's watching right now, he's going to send me a note that says that it's not your purview to decide who we prosecute and who we don't, but I, I do think if you look at the, the, kind of the ecosphere of expense, you've got the jail, you've got all the prosecutors, you've got all the law enforcement, that, that kind of three-legged stool is extremely expensive for the county. And certainly we want to have a safe community, but having a conversation about like how to prudently spend that money with the district attorney could be a conversation that doesn't necessarily have to lead to, hey, we're going to let criminals off the hook. I'm just, I want to point that out because it's just, since I've been here, you get the stack of expenditure reports, how much money we spend there. Maybe there's a conversation there, I don't know, but I guess I'm just putting all that out there to say these are going to be pretty hard conversations. So does this give you some clarity? It seems like
Yeah.
A lot of interest in holding the line, if not dropping the line down, which is harder than we've ever asked you to go before.
The budget probably could be set, obviously nothing's impossible, but to get to the R and R, it probably would take a lot of reductions in cash and possibly services. So that's the other thing that we look at is kind of how much cash we need on hand to carry over from year to year. We're pretty healthy right now in my budget that I'm working on, I'm cutting that back a significant amount in double areas, knowing that those are one-time cuts. Same thing here, if we cut $4 million in budget or cash, some of it's going to be one-time unless you really get rid of services, but I think at the next meeting I have some direction and I'll bring in as many departments or some of the impacts as possible.
And we'll, like we said, we'll look at each commissioner's feedback on, on outside agencies, but I'm hopeful we can be, like, even if the goal is to reduce, cut in half or fully cut, we can, we can be considerate of the fact that they rely on that money now and it may, may take some time, you know, maybe a few years versus yanking the rug. So maybe consider that in your, in your thought process. So, okay, sounds like we got good direction for you, Randy?
Yeah.
And, you know, I think it might be helpful on, in two weeks to, if you can give us some examples, like here's, like there's always a way, right?
Yeah.
Here's how you do it. And you can, you can show us, you know?
And that's going to take some time, so it may not be in the packet that comes out next week, because literally the packet will be emailed to you guys in about a week, so it's going to take some time to get to those levels. So what I'll have in the packet will probably be a very high-level overview, but we'll have more discussion on the 27th.
Well, I think, I think we understand that.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify.
With, with it live, in two weeks, we have to. Okay, any final comments on the budget?
I'd like to go back up and explain some, please.
I've got the early jump on protecting the budget this year.
This is back to our favorite subject, sewer. You wanted me to check with Sid again. I, I told you that the county manager, or the city manager a year ago, that I went to a city council meeting and he got up and spoke before I did an accident, so that, that ended there. Then in February 2nd of this year, I think that you wanted to know, you wanted me to check into that again prior to determining whether we's going to join these and buy this property. So on February 2nd, I got with the Mr. Francis, the city manager at that time, and asked him about bringing the sewer up to the city. And he took it to the city council members and two of them, two of them wanted to go forward with it, two of them denied it and one of them didn't know, and so Randall recommended not going forward with it. And he said, and if they did go forward with it, which the city council wasn't forward at that time, that he couldn't see charging any less than what they charged their customers. So that's full, you know, that's not wholesale price. And then his last comment was that if they, if they did a study to see what the, the price should be, it'd be around $20,000 and they didn't feel like the city would want to do that. And then he said his recommendation would be that, that we probably go ahead and put in the ponds. I just wanted to let you know that I have been back with the city this year.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, there's a few things there. One is, you know, it was kind of tied up to two. And since then, you were at the last, I don't think you were at the last joint meeting?
No.
Where there was kind of renewed conversation about like, hey, we need to be working together more on both sides. And they have some things they'd like to work with us on. And so I think things are warming up to work together more than they have in the past. And so I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't take your conversations in February as kind of status today
Okay.
Based on.
Do you want me to call the engineering firm and stop the design of this? Because it's in design.
No.
Okay.
I don't think, nobody said that, I don't think we want.
We want him to find a price of what it would cost for them to do a preliminary study to connect to the city, if that was ever going to happen?
I, I already sent the note to Randy via email and said, I'd like in our packet in two weeks, when we discuss this, to know what it would cost to provide an estimate of an alternative to connect to the wastewater treatment facility.
Okay.
Just, just the estimate for the estimate.
Okay.
You got to get that first, right? It'll be in the packet, the question is, can throw it in the trash if they want.
Okay.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
Um, are we, your report?
Okay. Monthly reports are in the packet, not written, they're for aging, public transit, appraiser, automotive, clerk, community corrections, communications, district attorney, and emergency management. Did you guys see anything or have any questions on anything in there? All right, that's all I have, because what I had on my list was some of the budget stuff and that's been taken care of, so.
It's blown up, didn't it?
Yeah.
I think it was a good conversation. Thanks, Randy. Commissioner reports, start on this side, Mr. Weitzel.
So this Saturday, I'll be part of the Lift Up Jesus Story Hour. That's, that's going to happen at 2000 North Pomplun at 3:00 PM. Just a place for kids to come and hear some, some really cool people that are going to read some stories to them. We're going to be giving away cotton candy and popcorn and so like to invite the public out to, you know, wholesome time, bring your kids, have some fun, get some cotton candy. And we're also going to try and get every kid that comes a free book as well. And we're also going to try and get every kid that comes a free book as well.
Thank you. Anything else?
Nope.
Uh, there's Quad County meeting this Monday. If you can make it away, it's a pretty good opportunity to visit, see what other counties and ask questions and have conversations with the other three counties.
El Dorado?
El Dorado, yes. And get ahold of Randy, so for transportation, if you want a carpool, right?
Right, because I know at least two commissioners are planning to attend, and if we wanted to, and I'll be going also, so if you wanted to ride.
Get me down to.
And Thursday, I'll be attending the SCAD meeting in Wichita, South Central Kansas Economic and Valuable History. And along with earlier conversations, uh, visiting with other counties too. When we look at, at taking out of reserve funds that we have on hand, I think the safe method is to have about four months worth of cash in a reserve to make sure that in case tornado, in case what else happens, that we have the wherewithal to be able to do that. So, just in kind. And my little saying about there's only three things that government can do to provide everything is you either to make up for inflation, you have to raise taxes, cut services, or increase the tax base. Third one, so one I'd like to center on. Thank you.
Commissioner Hirst, Commissioner Parks?
Couple of things I've seen Thursday, the ribbon cutting on the fire station up on North Main, and I'm going to tend that because I want to tour through it. Secondly, that evening also at Stringer Fine Arts, next area, we'll be here presenting. We went to a breakfast here while back and sit in on a real brief that they're going to prevent, or present in more detail their plans for this area. I want to sit in and just glean the information I think could be useful to have. And then, what was it, two, three weeks ago, we had a joint meeting with the city, and I brought up in that meeting to both bodies about taking the fireworks regulations away. Since then, I've been in contact with Greg Fast and, and he'd been kind of my liaison with the city. They have tentatively set it up for a vote this next time. I don't remember what the date is, I know you've talked to Paul Brown.
Yeah, I was just, I'm in touch with Paul Brown about what, when he's going to share with me what they, what he proposes.
Yeah. But I, it, it looks as though, and they, they have talked with Chief Beer as well. He wants it out of the way. The police department, I've talked to several of them, they want it out of the way, the regulations. Can't control it anyway, and he would rather just deal with the problems than have all extra help out, be out all night doing that. So, he give his nod as far as wanting to do away with the regulations. I brought up that I'd like to have both bodies do that for a change, because I had an incident a couple of years ago where I was in a backyard where they were going off, and a fire captain came in there and, and chatted us for doing that. I get that, I didn't do it, it wasn't me, but, and he was going to leave the scene, and I detained him so he could watch the neighbor set him off. It is just absolutely uncontrollable, there's no reason not to relax these regulations. I'm bringing that up today because Randy and I've talked as well. I'd like to see that, if we could, on the next meeting to make a decision, if we could, as to which way we'd like to go. And I, I, the, and I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but this is what Greg had told me. Greg wanted us to get some regulations in line to be able to follow whatever we do. And I'm understanding the other side of that, Paul would like to get, he'd like to see him in line and follow what they, but they ought to match up if we're going to do this.
I asked Paul which way he wanted to do it, and he said he was going to draft something.
So, that's fine.
I mean, my plan was to at least have a draft ready that would mirror what they did for you guys to consider.
Into next meeting?
Whenever they do, whenever.
Well, we want to get it done for the 4th if we're going to do something, and so I'm just bringing that up. I don't know whether there's even appetite. I did get feedback from several people at that joint meeting that they're on board with doing that, some that I was surprised supported that, so. But it sounds as to me, and maybe he indicated, he was the only one I understood stood in opposition to it was Paul, but it sounds to me that they're pretty much all on board and they're going to do it, so.
I don't have anything, I mean, I figured if the city of Hutch makes a change, I'll have something ready for you guys if you wanted to consider mirroring their, their code, as it were.
Well, and apologize, I didn't connect back to the, I know you want to talk about it, and maybe you want it on this agenda, but I don't have any problem putting it on the agenda. The, just so, I think maybe it's, it's always helpful to understand how the commission's thinking.
Right.
The, um, the current resolution in, in the county is kind of the, the safe and same rule, like the five, no more than five foot.
Six.
Is that right?
Yeah, it's supposed to be a six-foot height.
Okay, and you're, you're suggesting to eliminate that restriction?
Yes. And just, yeah, there's still illegal fireworks in the state of Kansas, as you can't do, but to release that restriction on it, because it doesn't get, you can stand at any given point in the county and see it's not going to happen. And they'll go outside and do it. And the other side of it is, and I know we talked about this, that it will see them selling that here in the future years, and, and there's more revenue off them big works than there are the smaller ones. I know it, a couple of people that used to sell fireworks, that they quit doing it because they can't make the money without selling those. I think the argument at the city-county meeting was it doesn't increase revenues, and I, Ron, you spoke up and said you've seen the, the increase in South Hutch when he was on the council from that. It's not going to be a big deal, but that is one other perk of it, and it's going to cut the overtime of a lot of people out patrolling this, having to fight it.
Well, I think it's good feedback to understand that, you know, we're not going to have 20 firefighters here in two weeks, doesn't sound like, it sounds like they're tired of forcing it to.
Right.
So, so we might put a pause on this, on your report for just a second, see if, so I, I would be fine with removing the restrictions, going to state lawful state fireworks. Where's the rest of the commissioners? That's what I'm asking.
Because they're being set off anyway.
I think there's one thing though, that we can, we can do, and that's, that's if we have an extremely dry period of time, that we could then say, okay, we're, we're having a ban on fireworks. That would take care of something. In that's the case, I think that would, that would help. That we still have the opportunity to, to enforce it if we get in a situation that's absolutely dry.
That never happens here. But I, I think the other side of that is, is you don't have them sneaking around doing it, and if it's in a responsible manner, it may be a little better to, so.
And that's something I just.
I've got experience in western Kansas, lived there for five years, and in five years, not one fire, it was always dry there, so.
Well, so, I, I think it might be worth, because I, I think you do really nice and simple resolutions, like if you could just edit our current one, like, and then send it to Paul, and then he can send whatever he wants, and then if you need to, to smash them together, you can. But really, all we're, I think in the current resolution, we have authority to, to place a ban at any time, depending on the conditions, right?
I think you want to keep that for weather conditions.
So, really, we're just
It's already there.
Asking to strike in the resolution restrictions on, on that height restriction, basically going to lawful state fireworks.
Throw in one thing, and the city of South Hutch had this, is that, I know it's always violated, okay, but it gives us some kind of, gives a public a thought process, is that we shouldn't fire, shoot off fireworks after such, such a time of night. South Hutch, it was 11 o'clock, and whatever you want to do, think about that.
I think we have that today. I think we have that already.
Yeah, that's what, if we're discussing, we should discuss it. Currently, it's 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM from the 30th of June through July 4th. So, you guys want to keep this current dates and times the way they are?
Sounds fine.
I, I, I don't see any reason to, because especially, I mean, for the county, it's not going to include the incorporated, appropriated areas anyway. Don, if you want to shoot fireworks at your property at 1:00 AM, I, I think, I think we ought to let you.
This old man will be in bed.
Think back, well, 40 years. I'd let you make that.
Oh, I saw some incidents 40 years ago, witnessed them, thank God I wasn't part of.
So, if you could bring that with our resolution, I, I don't think we're going to reinvent the wheel here for this strike and something. Would the commission be okay with staff writing a little press release that says we have the intention to do this, we'll make a decision in two weeks, just so people know it's coming? Is there any fireworks? Just a, a simple press release that Sandra could write, that, you know, in the conversation today, we had consensus to make the change, and it's going to come in two weeks. That way people.
Would you put it in there that the city's also made this decision?
Yeah, I mean, tentatively.
Well, tentatively, we're working together to do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think you, you're vouching for that conversation, right? If you want to talk to Sandra about, you could, you can put a quote in there, say we're working together. That sound good?
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that's good.
One more. I'd spoke to Randy earlier this week, just because I was curious, because I drive by the building every day, St. East Hospital setting up there, more and more windows broke out of it, plywood pulled off. My, and a couple of, yeah, the old hospital, that, that we apparently took ownership of at some point in time to try to get some grants for. This, whose liability is it if somebody's in that building and gets hurt at this point? Because vagrants do get in there, and people get in there for vandalism reasons, but we'd find somebody cut up going through the glass and they're dead, what, what, I mean, that's worst-case scenario, but.
Randy, sorry to catch up, yeah.
No, you're fine.
Randy always asks me if I have anything for the agenda, and as the meeting was going on, I was like, I shouldn't do a St. Elizabeth's update, because I knew that was my chief. When the county agreed, backing up, not that long ago, because I was here, I haven't been here that long, when the county was approached because Interfaith owned St. Elizabeth's abandoned hospital building that's defunct, and they wanted to apply for a grant with KDAG to remediate it and demolish it, but they weren't eligible under the state's program to apply, but a county or government would be. So, we entered into a written agreement with them that said we would take the ownership and title, we have a deed from them, and the agreement said that we would do that, they would have all the liability, we would both get it, both of our insurance companies to review it and make sure everything was in place, which I feel like it is, that, that if something happened in that scenario, their insurance would be in front, their indemnities in front, all those things. At the same time, I mean, you know, it would be, it would definitely take up staff time and county energy if we had some sort of incident we had to deal with, but financially I feel like we're secure. The, the update that, is that we recently found out that they did not get the grant that kind of started that whole process. So, I had emailed them this last week and said, we need to get it in front of you guys, whether or not you want to. The, the agreement we have says if they don't get that grant, we give it back to them. But I wanted to have, before we did that step, I think you, this board should review it. 27, it sounds like a monster date to throw that on the agenda, but that was my plan, was to just get in front of you and give Interfaith the chance, if you want to, to talk about it and just see what you guys want to do, or if you know now, you can talk to me, I guess.
Because they'll, I think they'll apply again for the grant this year.
They want to reapply, they've asked, they've asked KDAG for a debrief that, or someone to tell them, hey, what can we do to make a stronger grant presentation? However, I mean, that, that's what they're probably going to advocate for. And as I emailed them, you know, the decision to try and make a, take, make a go at this was with different commissioners, and we've got new people that should give input as to whether or not we go forward with it again, so.
How about, how about we do this? How about we do it four weeks? And between that time, we ask for some written confirmation as to what their plan is, addressing some of the concerns about lack of security and, and lack of, I mean, that's in the agreement, they're supposed to maintain it. I think Commissioner Parks is, is saying it appears that maybe it's not. Give them a chance to provide us a written explanation as to why they would want us to hold it, and what they're going to do for the security of it, and then we decide in four weeks.
Are they currently providing the maintenance, like yard mowing and all that on there? I see a crew come and do that, so we're not paying.
We're not, we haven't spent any money on that.
That'd be okay, four weeks, give, give them a chance to.
I just wanted to know more about what's going on.
Answer before we pull the plug.
To me, this is a huge albatross and a huge white elephant that we don't need to be involved with.
Yeah, I agree with that. That's the last thing I have, by the way, so I'll get out of the way from this.
Four weeks, okay. Thank you, Commissioner Parks, Commissioner Boaker.
I'll to revisit the fire issue and the new, new regulations. I, like Mr. Hurst, were signed up and took a little over an hour, hour and a quarter, but we ran into a glitch, as I said, I don't know whether it was our end or our computer or what. What I want to stress in this meeting to the, for the public, and say it publicly, don't put yourself in a bad position by not cooperating. Cooperating with the law and getting your stuff down eliminates a whole lot of liability and, and essentially eliminates the fines and other aspects that you're bringing upon yourself if you don't. It's, it's a doable deal. Like I said, we had some problems. It turned out, I made a, we made a phone call and they called us back over here at Emergency Preparedness and, and Mr. Boat with the fire and Fire Department Director. And we got together and sat down together. However it worked, we had, we got halfway through the program and we weren't getting things through. Little glitch here and there. We sat down together, got it hammered out, and Mr. Boat and I had a nice conversation while my nephew went ahead and filled the whole thing out. There was a couple little glitches that he helped us with. It's a whole new program, and, and any business that's introduced anything new knows there's a learning curve. Be patient, but most of all, don't ignore it. And the other thing is, it was made aware to me that if you've got a problem with computers, you can get help. Extension down here, if you're used to working with them, they will work with you. Conservation down at the farmer's service, they require some burning with some of their programs, they will help you. It's a phone call to our people over here, they will help you. But if you cannot fill it out on a computer, or don't want to go get their help, you can make a phone call to the people over here in Emergency Preparedness, the same number you've always used. They will take your phone number and your, or your address and, and name and phone number, and they will send you a hard copy. You can fill it out, send it back to them, and they will make sure your data's entered, and you will be in compliance. Keep yourself in compliance, just simply, it's just good business to be in compliance and not throw your hands up and not. Problem there is, anybody hearing it here and having those kind of access problems probably isn't going to hear it. And Travis and I talked about, they, they are trying to make some, some information available to the public in different manners, so it's progressing and I, Patrick, I did take note of those looks when I was making my comments earlier, earlier months, that I'm not, I don't think he's on the right track here. I think we've covered that. Well, after a good sit-down, and like I said, we were actually on the right track, we, we had a lot of it entered, it was just, there's, there's some questions about how you want certain parcels entered and stuff, and when that was made clear, the basic thing is, is they kind of made the point. they kinda made the point, they're not coming after anybody. And how that information will be used with their new computer system in fighting fires and knowing what to have when they get to, before they even leave the station house, cause they, they enter maps of the properties with the properties, they know what they're walking into and what they need to get going. There, there is a purpose for it, just please do your best to comply, however that might be on paper or otherwise. Thank you.
Just real quickly, also tomorrow, there's a K-14 ribbon cutting at ten thirty at, just let me get the right location. I was asked to come and speak on behalf of the county. Just a second here. That's at ten thirty at the Nickerson interchange. You're all welcome to attend. The acting transportation secretary will be there, as well as the mayor of Nickerson and Sterling and Hutchinson. Bryce County Chairman will be there.
That's the one north of Nickerson Exchange?
I don't know, it just says Nickerson Enter, Interchange. At one point, the governor was gonna be there, I didn't, I didn't see her on the. So, oh, here's a picture, let me just, I'll forward this to Randy and send it out to everyone, if you wanna go to that. I, you know, I have to admit, this wasn't, I'm not as familiar with that project, and I'd like to speak accurately on, on all the benefits it has for a county. And if you have anything we'd like to share as far as, I know it's, you know, Nickerson had mixed feelings about it at the time. Does anybody have any other feedback on, on that?
I, I would just say, because I happen to work in Barton also, that that's just the beginning of the long, of, of part of what they call the Northwest Passage, which is a huge deal to people who live north and west of you guys. If, I won't, I won't bore you with those details, but long-term, it could, and if, if that ever fully happened, it would really change the way interstate highways are used and transportation between Hutchinson and, you know, all of the Interstate seventy would be the benefits. It may someday become a big deal.
Looks like it's the interchange north of Nickerson.
North of Nickerson, yes. I mean, Nickerson and Sterling, okay.
And, and Nickerson Road, it looks like that's where the, okay. And then just one other comment, Next Era reached out to the county about getting on our agenda. I think there was consensus with staff and, and myself to ask them to kind of connect up with county planning staff first to understand what, where we're at in the moratorium and so forth. I think I was unaware and appreciate you bringing up the public meeting. So it seems like they're interested in doing something in the county today. They've not been a great public partner in the past, they, you know, probably, they sued the county and lost in appellate court, four, five-year process. And it really, I came on in, in kind of the, the heat of that, those final issues, and I just, I think you should make yourself aware of what's going on. It, from, from my experience, it was one of the most divisive things that could happen to the southeast part of our county, and it divided families and friends and neighbors, and I don't know that that ever fully was restored, and so.
It probably never will be, man.
Certainly, there's, you know, reasonable points of property rights and, and, and other things that we, we need to consider, but it was, it was fairly damaging to the county, and so we wanna make, just please be informed, and we wanna make good decisions going forward on, on what that means again. Hopefully, solar is not as divisive as wind, but it sounds like it's becoming that way from other counties and states, so it's worth, it's worth going and.
Almost every county's dealing with it right now, too. The biggest problem is, there is no regulation above us. State, other than a way to give them, help them build the facilities, there isn't much in the law above us that regulates these industries. They're mostly unregulated, that's why they're in these rural areas, and that's, that's where the problem is. And we'll just have to, I had intended to try to slip away to the meeting. It's my intent to be there simply to educate myself as to, I don't wanna say this, the, their attitudes towards this county and the people of the county. As Daniel pointed out, the way they went about doing things in the past in this county, they've got a lot of work to do to gain any trust at all in certain areas, any trust at all. Because what they did with the county is only a, a portion of how they handle their business. So we will have to see, go to the meetings and figure out what's going on.
I know in that meeting, that I went to, the breakfast meeting, the chamber, they were there just briefly talking. Did you stick around for all of that going? I don't remember. They talked about five to eight acres per kilowatt, and they want four hundred kilowatts in their sites if they can do that, so what, thirty-five hundred roughly acres, something like that, they're looking at minimum?
I would encourage you to research the agriwilltag portion of solar farms. I think, to me, that is extremely important, to have that agriwilltag concept included in our rules and regulations.
Well, so just to wrap it up, I, I think, you know, I think we felt like it would be premature for the county to be, the county commission to be having conversations with Next Era ahead of, of the planning commission's work and allowing that to go through. Unless there's objection, I don't think we would have any problem with staff meeting with them, if they wanna provide an update, so we're, we're staying connected, but.
I think that the.
You're saying.
Planning Commission.
Yeah, whoever, I mean, Randy and, and Park Manatch and Patrick, if they wanna meet with us to, you know, hear what their plans are.
I think we need regulations in place prior to all of this happening.
That, that's really the problem with the, I think, like, when you're trying to make the whole framework, and then you have a specific project with specific ideas in mind, it can kind of conflate it to, because the regulations we make will apply for everybody, not just this company, you know, so, and really the focus on that.
If, if you, if you allow them access, then you, then you gotta allow ever, ever other company access.
Or individuals.
And, and individuals, so we're not at that point yet.
Yeah, I mean, I think, just for me, I don't mind listening to anybody who's interested in solar, like, if you're interested. But that is, we, we're not gonna tailor our regs to one company, or anyone, you know, we're not. The only thing I wanna listen to is just, if there's certain things, sometimes when you're making a reg, or when you're making rules that make sense to you, but you're neither a developer in that industry, so sometimes it's good to know why certain things are certain ways, I just need to understand some of the technicalities of it, but, you know, I, I don't know where to play it.
Could you, could, if you so desired, could you go to the public meeting and ask, if you so desired, and if you didn't think that you needed to, then?
Perception problem, and I don't wanna get into that perception problem, I don't think we desire to get into that perception problem, we'll have to answer it's commission, why we allow that?
I don't, I don't want the water's money.
Okay, that's all the reports. Thank everybody for being here today, unless there's any other comment, I'll adjourn the meeting, thank you.